We have a call to order the regular city council meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council on Wednesday, July 10th, 2024. Nothing to report out of, excuse me, out of closed session. First item, please.
We have the flag salute.
Okay, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
We have the roll call. Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Present.
And Mayor Daniels.
Here. Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, July 15th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at the city's YouTube channel.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer and seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Gins, next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you very much. I've asked Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa to do this presentation.
I'd like to invite Sunrise Recreation Park District staff. I think we have Finance Manager Margaret Hatton, Interim Recreation and Community Services Superintendent Jake. Jake, is your last name pronounced Polito?
It is.
Oh, Polito. That's a nice name. Senior Account Clerk Michelle Patterson and Customer Service Representative Loida Bartoamimungo. There we go. Thank you. This is a presentation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming July 2024 as Park and Recreation Month. Whereas National Parks and Recreation Month is celebrated in July, recognizing that parks and recreation build stronger, healthier, more resilient communities, this year's theme, Where You Belong, celebrates the many ways park and recreation professionals across the country foster a sense of belonging in their community. And whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of the Citrus Heights community and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community, and whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas the Sunrise Park and Recreation District that serves the Citrus Heights community promotes physical, emotional, and mental wellness through organized fitness, play, activities, and special events in partnership with the city, such as Stars and Stripes and Sunday Fun Day. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby recognize the month, the whole month, of July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month and urges all citizens to become familiar with the parks, trails, facilities, programs, and services available to them, and further recognizes the Sunrise Recreation Park District's contributions to the Citrus Heights community. Would you like to speak?
Sure. Well, first off, thank you for having us up here today. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. So thanks for having us today, City Council. First of all, I can speak on behalf of all of Sunrise, you know, and we just want to express our gratitude for the partnership that we've had with the city over the many years as a district. And I think July is a beautiful month to recognize recreation. It's really the start, not only of our new fiscal year, but really it's, it's right there at the boom of summer. So we have so many programs that we offer to our community via aquatics, sports, special interests, special events, and just an absolutely amazing team, whether it's our various staff, full-time and part-time, and just overall, you know, being involved in the community, one of our goals moving forward is to really nurture this relationship we have with the city. You know, at the end of the day, our community, when they look out and they see our parks and they see our activities, they have a hard time, I think, distinguishing, hey, city and Sunrise Recreation Park District. To them, you know, we're overall one community, and I think that's how we want to represent Sunrise moving forward, strengthen those bonds and continue to strengthen those bonds with the city and all of our other amazing community partners, you know, as we progress into the new 24, 25 year.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
I have one other comment. We failed to put in the dog park. We have a nice dog park that is part of the Sunrise Park District and serves the dogs of our community, and also the Neighborhood Ten, the Arcade Creek Park Preserve that you've worked with us on the neighborhood level to make the sensory trail for the handicapped and blind. It's kind of cool.
Absolutely, and we appreciate all your help with that as well.
And I appreciate yours.
I just have a quick question. It's a little bit controversial, but did you have to close the pool because it got too hot?
Actually, no. We keep the pool open. So if we do have to close the pool, it's due to usually chemical reasons with our, our pumps and filtration.
Was it closed?
Roseville closed their aquatic center.
They were having issues keeping.
Oh, Folsom. I'm sorry. It was Folsom.
Roseville actually had issues as well.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you very much.
Any other, any other speakers? So just thank you for what you guys do. You know, Parks and Rec helps to identify a community and a city, and so what you're doing is great, and it's not always easy and in today's world, and, and thank you for what you guys do to make it a success. Really appreciate it. We're going to come down and take a quick picture real quick, okay?
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number five, a presentation by the Citrus Heights Police Department for National Night Out on August 6th, 2024.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council, City Manager. I am Samantha Lofis, and I am the Executive Assistant to Chief Turkot across the street of the Police Department. And with me here tonight is Impact Sergeant Kyle Schoberg, and we are here to let you know officially that National Night Out is coming Tuesday, August 6th, 2024. As you guys know, we do this every year. It's a great community event where we venture out all over the city, and it's been my pleasure to go out and promote this event to numerous community groups. I've been to numerous Neighborhood Association meetings over the last couple of weeks, and I have a couple more to attend next week, and I've been to the Reach Board meeting promoting it. So we're looking forward to a great event. And Sergeant Schoberg here is going to tell you a little bit more.
Yeah, so we're really excited to kick this off this year. This is going to be the 40th year in a row that the National Night Out has occurred nationwide, started in 1984. So that's a big deal. I don't want to age myself, but that was two years before I was born, so we won't do the math. But we are looking forward to this event. This is something where the city and the PD, we look at each other as one team, and we're able to take our team and go out into the community, hang out with all of the community members, inform everybody what we're doing, answer questions, and really push the, you know, the CM's agenda of the CARES Act and what we're doing as a city to, you know, beautify the city together as one team. And it really gives the city and the PD an opportunity to answer communities for the, you know, or questions for the community. And we go out and break off in groups, go out to all the NA spots, all the different neighborhoods, interact with the community members, and it's a good time for the neighbors to come out, meet their neighbors, and, you know, it's been a proven statistic that if the neighbors know each other and they interact with, you know, each other, their family, their kids, it does reduce crime. We ask that if you see something, you say something, and I think this event brings everybody together to accomplish that goal. So we're excited. This is something we do every year, and it's a, it's a hard act to follow, CM, after the Stars and Stripes event that we've done the last two years. So big, big shoes to fill on that. That's been a fantastic event every year, and everybody seems to love it, and that's growing more and more each year. So we're also excited about that. So we're excited about this. The easiest way to register for the National Night Out, if you haven't yet, is go to the citrusheightspd.net website and click on the little National Night Out banner at the top, which is shown here on the screen. It's a quick form to fill out, and I want to publicly recognize Sam for all her hard work that she's put into this. It's no easy task. It is a, it's a big event, and Sam has done a good job putting this together. So thank you for, for doing all the hard work, and thank you, council members, for having us. City Manager, we appreciate it, and we hope to see you guys all out there.
Thank you. I think Kyle's excited, so.
Oh, I'm super excited.
Councilmember Middleton.
It's the barbecue.
I was super excited until you pointed out when it was first started. It's literally as old as I am, so thanks.
Oh, hey.
But looking forward to it. It's always such a great event, so I encourage the community to really come out, get to know your neighbors, have fun. I hear even 7-Eleven usually gives out some ICs. I would know about, you know, I might have like, you know, four or five every year, but you know, do your own thing, right?
Yeah, we're hoping for the weather to kind of calm down a little bit by the time we get there, so let's all hope for that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is great. This is, again, what helps communities get together. And if people don't understand what this night is about, it's, again, getting out your front door and, and finding somewhere in your neighborhood where people decided to get together. And some communities have barbecues and have a ton of food, some communities have ice cream, some just get together, and, and anybody can do that. Anybody can do that. So if you want to put together a little something, you know, go to the website, put something in there, and, you know, hopefully get your neighbors out and, and get to know each other and, and that kind of stuff. So it's a great thing. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you folks. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment.
All right.
And if you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each. The mayor has the discretion to reduce the allotted time. We have a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Also consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda.
All right. And so I have some speaker sheets. I'll go through those first, and then you have a couple that you're going to read. Okay, very good. First, I'm going to call up Linda Maxim.
Hello.
Hold on a minute, Linda. We can't hear you.
Oops. I'm a Citrus Heights resident for 24 years and a business owner. The subject this evening that I'd like to bring to your attention is the safety of the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail. The city spent a lot of money to build this beautiful trail, and while I don't know the crime rate and what's going on, but we now see people using the path as an opportunity for crime and graffiti. I would like to give you an example. I drove home one night, and there was a girl at the end of the path screaming, and she came to my car. She was in the middle of the street, and there was two gentlemen there, and we called 911. The dispatcher asked us what happened, and she said she couldn't send anyone out, that nothing happened to that person. The next morning, that fence, which is still graffitied, that whole fence where Watchtale is at the end of the path, is graffitied. Those two guys were up to no good, and she, as women, we should be able to use that path any time of day, to walk by ourselves, to run or anything. So I believe that the police department should have some kind of plan for routine patrol of the pathway. For example, officers on bike or foot, they'd get to know people on the path, too. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming up.
You're welcome.
Next up is David Shelton.
Good evening. My name is David Shelton, and I live on a green belt, and ask what does Citrus Heights practice on illegal fireworks? There are illegal fireworks at three houses on our street and behind the houses across the street. My focus was the possibility of a fire in the green belt spreading to my house. Three Sacramento houses did have illegal fireworks fires. Fireworks were illegal. They were shot into the air at each of these locations. I called Citrus Heights 911 to report the early fireworks. The numbers were few at that time. Later, there were many illegal displays. There were many illegal fireworks in Fair Oaks and Carmichael, as I am only two blocks from the South City limits. I expected in the morning of July the 5th evidence of the fireworks. No evidence was found. The areas were totally clear. No fireworks, but each location had six to nine included parked drives, parked cars in the driveway, some being repaired and some in the street. This could indicate many drivers or repairs being done. My thought was, how many drivers can live there? The vehicles count was early on July the 5th, the night after Fourth of July, but by noon, all the vehicles, except the vehicles under repair, were gone. When we sold our other house one block away, I learned a bedroom requires only a closet. Put a hole in the wall, put a closet behind it, you got another bedroom. The house that I had was three bedrooms. Now it's four bedrooms, and there was no limit of the number of individuals who could live there. Is there a limit on sleeping individuals in the City of Citrus Heights?
So, David, we're not allowed to get back and forth, go back and forth with you?
I understand.
On that, but if we'd like, if you'd like some answers to that, we will have somebody reach out to you and give you the answers, okay?
I, I expect to hear something back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming by. Really appreciate it. Next up, Melissa Hayden.
Hi, guys. I hope it's okay. I'm actually doing two people, mine and Karen Bierman. She had an emergency with her dog this evening, so she actually did send me her speech for you guys.
So I'm only able to give you your five minutes. If you can include her comments and your comments, then.
No, Karen. I know she's watching.
Karen's a good gal, but, you know, you're here.
I'm going to read both.
Okay.
Or do both.
Do your best.
That's okay. Okay. This is from Karen. She was a volunteer for the Fourth of July. She did the 29th, the 3rd, and the 4th as a volunteer in the police department for any dogs lost, loose, and found. I would like to speak about animal control being staffed on Saturday, June, I just said that, 29th, July 3rd, and July 4th. It was amazing. We had two officers on duty until midnight each of those nights. Plus, we had set up a holding shelter at the police station that my granddaughter and I staffed on a volunteer basis. There was only one dog that was walked into the station on Thursday night, having been spooked by fireworks. The lady who found him saw a post where I had said that animal control would be on duty, so she walked the dog into us. I think more communication between the city and the public would have benefited the use of animal control officers and volunteers in a great capacity. The public was greatly unaware that animal control was on duty until midnight and that we had temporary holding facilities set up at the police station. While I do understand the reasoning behind the decision, I think for those three days, it would have been benefited that the public, for the benefit for the public and the animals. We also noticed that there was a lack of communication internally between animal control, dispatchers, and the police officers. People who called into animal control were being told animal control was closed, when in fact, they were there. They got, that got straightened out by, real quick, thanks to Melissa. The lobby of the police station was open until 8:00 p.m. as a cooling center. At 8:00 p.m., when officers came to lock the front door, my granddaughter and I would be sitting in the lobby. They each asked us if we were there for the cooling center. They had no knowledge of the temporary animal shelter that had been set up and staffed by volunteers. All the officers were very nice about it, though. All dogs that were called into animal control were reunited immediately with their owners, and one pup that was walked into the station was impounded and immediately filed, I immediately filed a foster application and brought the pup home with us on a mini-vacation of meeting my new dogs, playing with a teenage girl, and swimming. Every day, I was posting all over the internet, and he was found on Saturday. His owners reached out to me. We met the, we met at the police station on Monday when animal control opened, and it was the most precious reunion I had seen. I appreciate the time, energy that it took and undertake the pilot program. The only thing I would change is mass communication internally and with the residents of Citrus Heights. People here have huge hearts and did take in many lost and terrified pets over the weekend. They just didn't know there was a place to take them. Karen. So on my behalf on that is pretty much the same. I'm doing a recap on the Fourth of July. I'd like, if I did a count right, we had 29 lost and found pups through Citrus Heights. The numbers are not going to reflect through animal control because only three were called in that were RTOs. That's not counting my call in and the two that I caught, and then the other one I assisted into Sylvan Corners. So there was a lot more dogs. One was hit on Highway 80 in Antelope due to the fireworks and killed. These are not reported by animal control, as that would no longer be our animal control officer. That would be, I believe Caltrans took care of that. So out of that, 29 dogs that we had loose on the Fourth of July. As you can see, PCS, PCA, Placer County Animal Services, sorry, had 44 intakes for the Fourth of July. We were a large number of that, so that does conclude that part of it. The other part is the communication that Karen was talking about. So my portion was on July 3rd. I got a call in at 5:40 p.m. from a friend of mine who's a trapper for cats, and said, there is a loose dog here at Madeira Park. I called into dispatch because I thought, hey, I'm the one who got this set up. Thank you, Ash. Thank you, City Council, and thank you to animal control for that. I called into dispatch. It took me three minutes and 42 seconds to get a dispatcher on the line, which I thought, okay, it's going to be worse on the Fourth, because people are also going to be calling in illegal fireworks, the booms, whatever. But I called it in, and the dispatcher had told me specifically, I'm sorry, we do not have animal control on duty. I can transfer you to their voicemail. And I said, no, I'm sorry. I got this approved through our city manager and through our city to have animal control on. They are on until midnight for the 3rd and the 4th. Please contact our animal control and dispatch it on the board. And he said, no, I will not dispatch it, because we will not send a police officer for loose dogs. I said, okay, I understand that. In the meantime, I was able to contact an animal control officer because of who I am and that I know that everybody here involved. So I contacted, and I dispatched the animal control officer, and I told the gentleman, I said, I'm sorry, I've already, thank you for your help, but I've already dispatched them. It then took me calling into Officer Tiffany Campbell, explaining the situation, and she went into dispatch and cleared it. There was no communication to dispatchers to help animal control, to dispatch on the board or do that, and how many animals stayed on loose, and how many people were told that they're loose, that they would not help for loose dogs.
I need you to wrap up, Melissa.
Yes, I'm done. That's pretty much it. So I just wanted those numbers out to you guys. We did excellent, but the police officers were great to our volunteers. Everything went great. Animal control was great, and we had three amazing RTOs, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for what you and Karen are doing, and, you know, it's, it's something new, so there's some bugs.
Yeah.
You get better.
We'll, we'll get better. We just didn't have the communication.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Next up is David Warren.
Good evening. I have two matters. First, I spoke to one of the alumni from NYU in Lexington, Kentucky, and he's going to be going to the City Council to introduce a resolution not to allow any California politicians to move there. But.
Good idea.
Hey, I have friends in low places. But more importantly, the reason I came here is the fireworks. My wife is unfortunately terminal. She's in the hospital, and I had arranged to sleep in the hospital on the Fourth of July. We have an alarm system in our house, and it was going off so often that I was forced to leave the hospital and come home. As I drove down Crosswoods Parkway to go to Crosswood Circle, there were two people throwing M80s onto the land right across from the apartments adjacent to the creek and the parkland, and the parkland is very dry grass, and when I asked them to stop, they just laughed at me. It was, it is not with a lack of respect to the police department, but if I'd called it in, it just won more of many, because as I got out of my car to go in the house, I saw all of the explosions going off in, in the air. My, I think it's time, our community has grown enough that we need to establish a reserve police officer corps to be available for such events, such as the Fourth of July event on the 29th, the holidays such as New Year's Eve, Christmas, Fourth of July, to expand the number of people out on patrol. We are now, we're no longer just an agricultural little community. We're no longer just a residential community. We've, we've grown, and we have to expand to meet the needs. The sworn officers are very limited in what they can do, only because of my criminal law background as a defense attorney. I know how long it takes from the moment of contact to arrest, preparing the necessary reports, and transportation to a lockup would take the officers completely out of the picture for most of the evening. So if we had reserve officers just to drive through the streets and make themselves visible, that would be very effective to cut down on the number of incidents. We are going through growing pains, and the city has to adopt and adapt to those changes, and it is way behind the curve on this kind of thing. So I've come here tonight to ask that you do something, because the response time on holidays is very lengthy, and we need to adjust. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David, very much. Okay, that's all the speaker sheets I have. I believe Amy has a few call-ins or write-ins.
I have two that were emailed to the city clerk's office, and the first one was from a Holly Day. Disregard for homeless rights is inhumane. Homeless people are human. They may not look like you, but they are not animals. They cry and feel sad like everybody else. To take the few things they have is cruel. I hope Citrus Heights can set an example in treating fellow humans with some dignity and respect. The next comment is from Serena Ostrowski. She states, I am writing this statement on behalf of our homeless community in Citrus Heights. I am asking for a safe place for them to sleep. It is dangerous to have homeless women hiding in secluded areas because they are afraid of getting tickets they are not able to pay for. It's even unsafe for males. These people are someone's daughter, son, sister, brother, father, mother, auntie, or uncle. Please practice compassion when making decisions affecting these individuals. And that concludes the written public comments.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay, Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off by saying and embarrassing you, happy belated birthday.
Oh, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I don't like celebrating them anymore.
Also, on the 8th, we had our Sacramento Valley Regional Division meeting, and the most important thing that's coming out of that is, one, on July 19th, we're having our first in-district meeting in Elk Grove, so it's, we don't have to travel far. So I'm hoping that my colleagues will actually come down to Elk Grove. It'll be at the Veterans' Hall, and the topic is. It'll be at the Veterans Hall, and the topic is going to be police recruitment and retention. And I don't see my chief, so that means he's going to get a text message from me later about this, just as a reminder. We're going to have the Elk Grove Police Lieutenant Carlos Vena and the Redding Police Administrative Captain coming out to talk about the different types of tactics and strategies they've used to help bring in more officers and retain them, because we know that with limited funding, we have to find creative ways to make sure our officers stay with our municipalities, but also make sure our communities remain safe. And coming up for you guys on my council, October sixteenth is our annual conference in Long Beach. We're going to do a year review, and the installation for division officers, I have to back up a little bit there, on the nineteenth, we'll be voting for our new division officers. I will no longer be your president, so I'll be your immediate past president, and I'm looking forward to handing over that gavel. And we'll have a bunch of different topics that the African-American Caucus will be talking about when it comes to how do we create more inclusive places around transportation and housing, and I'm looking forward to having a really robust discussion about that at annual conference.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lopez.
Surprisingly, I did not attend any meetings. I think all of my groups are on summer break, but I did happen to enjoy my Fourth of July because I think our neighborhood got extra coverage from the police, because we were the neighborhood that had the fires last year. So, we actually had a very quiet Fourth of July because of the enforcement in my neighborhood.
All right, Councilmember Shaffer.
Thank you, Mayor. So, it's been a busy time. Certainly, I had on June twentieth, we had our SECOG meeting that was remote in Yuba City, where it was still, this is our third or fourth meeting, where it was quite contentious, but we, while we did, we did pass the blueprint. There's some other additional things, business we have to do related to the blueprint, but finally got that passed. Then, on the twenty-sixth, I took a trip with SECOG, with most of the board, to Denver, Colorado. It was a very interesting trip getting out there. We had, there were thunderstorms at the Denver Airport. We circled the Denver Airport for about an hour and a half. We ran low on fuel, diverted to Colorado Springs. Long story short, what was supposed to be an hour and fifty-minute flight, fifty-eight-minute flight turned to seven hours. So, it was a fun time. But ultimately, it was a great, great trip to Denver. It was really interesting. We did, I did go and visit the Belmar Mall, which is very, very similar to our Sunrise Mall project. They had complicated ownership like we do. We had a lot of things in common, and I'd like to, I'll bring this back to council at the end of the meeting, but I certainly like to, to talk more about this. But nonetheless, it was a great trip. And then, that was on June twenty-sixth, and then coming right back on, getting back on Friday, and then the next morning went to Stars and Stripes. Phenomenal. Really, really good job. Certainly have some suggestions on what we might be able to do better, so I'd certainly like to chat with folks on that, but it was a great, really, really amazing event. I had my grandkids there. They had a great time. It was their first time going to Stars and Stripes, so really, really a fun time. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and stop there and move on.
All right, thank you so much. Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
It's true. Everybody's on summer break, so there's not a lot of meetings. I tried to go to the grand opening of the Galaxy Game Cafe. I guess, I wanted to see what it was, so I figured I'll never go there in reality, so I might as well go to the grand opening and say hi. I couldn't find it. I went in the shop and sent them, driving around, round, round, driving, and I couldn't find it, so I didn't go. Anyways, it was an attempt. And then I was working, our Area Ten runs a Safe and Sane Fireworks booth in front of Sprouts. We use our money for wonderful things in our community, such as feeding seniors at Christmas. We did buy a cooling vest for our police dog, and I hope it came in handy this last week. So, working that, and we teamed up with Single Moms Strong as partners for that, and we, better than last year by a little bit. I did have a sewer meeting this morning, and something interesting for Megan and for the, I guess, planning would be interested. We've changed our policy so that any infill development that creates jobs, commercial or industrial, will get fifty percent off their sewer impact fee. It used to be based on the number of employees. So, if you had one to five, you got fifteen percent. If you had five to ten, you got twenty-five percent. And if you had a bunch, you got fifty percent. Well, they decided to do fifty percent across the board for all infill projects, and there's like a hundred thousand dollars they're going to chew up on that, so I guess it's a limit that much a year. So, if we have applicants, you might want to contact Sewer Department, find out more about these, how the process goes for waiving impact fees, because I think it's an incentive for infill throughout the whole Sacramento area, and it's squeaky wheels. So, that was sewer, and there was no mosquito meeting. This next week, we'll have one, but I just wanted to report out that this year is a little bit better than last year compared to the number of positive mosquitoes that are positive for West Nile at this time last year. So, I don't know if the hot weather, they stay, you know, someplace other than in people's yards, but a little bit lower. We've had twenty positive mosquito pools, where they collect mosquitoes in a trap and put them all together in this twenty positive pools. We have twenty-six dead positive birds that have been in our district. Most of those are in Zamora in Yolo County, so it's not like local for us. We were hit bad one year, but it seems like the virus moves around the county a little bit. And so, I still want to encourage people to use repellent, especially if you're going to do National Night Out. I think I could bring some repellent to City Hall in the front, and if people want to pick up repellent at the front desk, I'll make that available. Take as much as you need. I'll just bring a whole bunch, because I didn't dispense it at the fireworks this year. Usually, I give it out at fireworks booth. So, I'll have, I can bring a whole bunch to City Hall. And then, next Monday, I'm going to do Monday with the mayor for the mayor, and so if you want to come to City Hall between nine and noon and have a cup of coffee, we can chat. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, it was a great opportunity to go up and buy some fireworks at the stand that you mentioned.
Did you come?
I did.
I wasn't there when you came here?
You were not there, but that's okay. I know you were in the spirit. So, and again, thank you for doing Mondays with the Mayor next week. That's continuing. For you that don't know, it's every Monday, I or somebody like the Vice Mayor will be here from nine AM to twelve PM, and you can come up and chat about anything you want to chat about. And then, the only other thing is Stars and Stripes, the event, and oh my God, you know, what an event, what a, what a great time. I mean, just everything about it was just absolutely incredible. Everything that you would want in a, an event, a family-friendly event, was in place, and the crowd was over the top, and I'm concerned about next year because of the growth, but that's a good thing. And the only suggestion I have, and I appreciated the lights, the extra lights this year, and so that was good, and the only other thing would be a second Kona ice truck, because the forty-five-minute wait was, but those guys were working their hearts out, and just working as hard as they could, but yeah, a second Kona ice truck would be good. That's it for me. Next item, please.
Next item, we have consent calendar items six, seven, eight, nine, and ten.
Is there anyone that would like to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Mayor, I'd like to abstain from the approval of minutes since I wasn't here.
Okay.
And I have a question on item nine.
Do you need a staff report or just a question?
Just a question. I think the city manager can answer it.
Could you read that item, Amy?
Number nine.
Number nine is the California Highway Patrol Cannabis Tax Fund Grant Program Funding Acceptance.
So, we're getting a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-nine pennies, and my question is, how is that amount determined? Is it based on population, on past performance of our DUI checkpoints, or how is that money determined? Do you know?
I'm going to get a little assistance from Commander Wells on that.
Okay.
He'll be right back.
Maybe Ellie knows. I just wondered how, how that...
Yeah, I'm sure there's a formula associated with it, but I think that Commander Wells...
There's some formula to come up with pennies at the end, I'm sure. Anyway, it's for the benefit of the public. It's for DUI checkpoints and drug recognition training and things like that. Wonderful grant.
And I know he'll be here momentarily to answer that question.
And I would have called you, except we moved our meetings to Wednesdays, so now I'm a day off on my calling to ask questions ahead of time.
If you'd like to pull that item, and we can bring it back at the end of the meeting, we can do that.
No, I just, I'm going to prove it. Maybe you could just answer the question after, some of the time after tonight?
Yeah, absolutely. We can, we can answer that later on in the meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Any other items, anybody wishing to pull? So, we'll entertain a...
I'll move approval of all the items.
Okay, with the condition of number six, Councilmember Shaffer abstaining.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa, and second by Councilmember Middleton. Any comments or questions to the motion? No, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number eleven. The subject is draft Citizen Participation Plan Amendment and twenty-twenty-five through twenty-nine Consolidated Plan Update for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the amended Citizen Participation Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
So, good evening, Mayor, council members. Nicole Piva with the Community Development Department. So, just a quick update. This is just a brief update of the planning process and development of our five-year consolidated plan. This is related to our federal funding Community Development Block Grant Program, which is known as CDBG. So, we will like to open that up for any public comment and feedback prior to bringing this draft plan back to council in October. And then, the second part of the item is to review the amended Citizen Participation Plan. This is also part of our CDBG program, so we will ask for recommendation to approve the plan with resolution at the end of this meeting. So, now I'd like to introduce Heidi. She is with Root Policy. She is the program manager, and I've been working with Heidi to develop this plan with her team since January, so I'm excited. She's here to share this update with you, and she is from Denver, Colorado.
Great, thank you so much, Nicole, and I'm so sorry to hear about your, your travel to Denver, but I hope you enjoyed your time there. I'm going to talk, I'm going to take about ten minutes, maybe a little bit less, giving you an overview of the plan and what's, what we're talking about today is the Citizen Participation Plan mainly. I'll talk a little bit about the federal reporting requirements for CDBG, and then there's an opportunity for public and council comments. So, there are three plans, if you will, that are of, that I'll talk about today. One is the Consolidated Plan. It's a five-year consolidated plan. It is due to HUD on the fifteenth of November of this year. It's a five-year strategy that helps set the stage for how the city will invest its six hundred thousand dollars that it gets annually over a five-year period. The Annual Action Plan is a one-year spending plan, so that will set the allocation priorities for the next year. And then, what we're talking about tonight is the Citizen Participation Plan, and this talks about how the public and stakeholders will be involved in forming the Consolidated Plan goals and the action plan priorities. So, Consolidated Plan, for those of you who aren't familiar with that, it's a five-year planning document. It's required by HUD. It uses data, community outreach. We've done a lot of community outreach already to determine housing needs, community development concerns, and then gaps in supportive services. It's produced every five years, as I said earlier, and it's a condition to receive funding. You need to do this in order to get your funding. And there's been close coordination with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, or SHRA, with whom you collaborate in another program, another block grant program called HOMES. So, that program provides money for housing. So, how does the city of Citrus Heights use HUD funds? You invest in a variety of activities. CDBG is primarily a community development program, not much of a housing program, but it can support housing activities. And in the past, the city has invested CDBG in what HUD calls public services, and those are supportive services or operations for nonprofits. Those have been funded, those dollars have funded senior meals, after-school programs, food provision, and renters' helpline. You've also invested CDBG to make neighborhood improvements and community centers, very consistent with what the public is telling us is a priority, as well as capital improvement projects, small business support. The city's used some of its funds for small business support, and that's a tricky activity to use with CDBG. Cities also developed or invested in rehabilitation of aging housing. And then, finally, the regional HUD funding or the HOMES program that I referred to, there's also some homeless dollars attached to that. Those dollars are invested in affordable rental and for-sale housing, as well as homeless So, I've mentioned earlier, we've been doing a lot of community engagement to support this plan. My partners, Sheri and Vanessa, have been in town and done what we call pop-up events. So, we've been at farmers' markets. We've promoted the survey that we had open until the end of June. That analysis is ongoing right now. We've also talked to a lot of nonprofits. We've talked to a lot of city employees about priorities, about projects they'd like to see happen in the city, and they're getting their ideas on how CDBG funds should be prioritized over the five-year period. This is the first public hearing associated with this process, and then will be another one when the draft plan is out for public comment in the fall. So, what we're talking about tonight is what's called the Citizen Participation Plan. This is an element of the five-year consolidated plan, and its purpose is to set forth how the community will be involved in developing the consolidated plan. It's been around for a while, and we've made some adjustments to the Citizen Participation Plan, which is why I'm here to talk about that tonight. It talks also about how stakeholders should be consulted, and by stakeholders, I mean people who are in the practice of housing and community development and service provision. It also specifies how low-income residents will be engaged, and HUD really wants to see engagement of people with disabilities, minority populations, persons with limited English proficiency, residents who benefit from public and assisted housing, as well as those who are most likely to be impacted, so neighborhood associations who may be impacted by CDBG investments. So, just a quick overview of what we've changed for this plan. The plan is currently out for public comment. We streamlined some of the language, made it a little easier for Nicole and her, her team to implement the citizen engagement as we think forward to those annual action plans. We talk a lot in the plan about how residents will be engaged and give some opportunities for different types of engagements, so you can tailor that engagement to the current plan every year. We're also recommending that the city maintain a contact list of resident groups, advocates, and organizations to contact during development of the plan and routinely engage with. We've also recommended some enhanced coordination. This is already going on, but at least talked about the enhanced coordination with SHRA. One of the big changes in HUD has relaxed requirements of public notices published in newspapers. Sacramento Bee is where the cities traditionally publish those notices. That's expensive, and so we're suggesting that those notices for this type of a plan, as well as the public comment period and the hearings, are published in your local newspaper, not necessarily the Bee. We also, we discovered with Noel, with Nicole's help, your very excellent Limited English Proficiency Plan. The city has an amazing plan to ensure that people for whom English is not their first language, or they have limited English proficiency, that they can engage appropriately within all types of city activities. So, we rolled in the language that is relevant, that was relevant to this plan into the Citizen Participation Plan, and those are both available for public review and comment at the link shown here. So, again, just a shout-out about the English, the Limited English Proficiency Plan that you all have. We have supplemented the Citizen Participation Plan with that. You're probably my first client where we've done that, because you had an existing Limited English Proficiency Plan that was so good, we were just able to roll that into the CPP. And with that, I am happy to take comments, both from council and the public. I just had some prompting questions here to prompt discussion and questions, if you have those. The first is, we'd like to get comments on the top priorities for housing and community development needs. That would inform the main consolidated plan. I also am happy to take any questions or comments on the Citizen Participation Plan, the document that's out for public comment, as well as some of the streamlining that I just spoke about, and then happy to take any broad comments about the five-year consolidated plan.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, any comments or questions for the presentation? Okay, this is a public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, any comments or questions for the presentation?
Oh, I have some that will wait till I-
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I have no speaker sheets. Amy, do you have anything?
I do not have any.
I'm gonna close the public hearing?
No.
Okay, that was-
That was fast.
Any comments or questions now? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So, when you say, and I'm looking at page 71 of our packet, which is a different page for the plan, but it's page 71, and it says to publish in the newspaper. I don't get the messenger, and there's a lot of people that don't, unless you live where the messenger is delivered. So, I'm thinking that you would have our, we have a person at the city who does public notices of things, that they do something similar to a press release and send it to, you know, various outlets, including the Sentinel. Because I know a lot of people do the online newspaper at the Sentinel, and they send it there. And I'm sure somebody would write something about it. So, I just think we should expand beyond the messenger, because I didn't read the messenger. I come to city council, I mean, city office and get a copy, because it's, I don't see it otherwise. That was my first one. My second question is, in your languages, that you have Spanish and Russian. And I don't mean to be insensitive, but a lot of Ukrainians are not Russian. And the Ukrainian language doesn't use the Cyrillic alphabet. So, I'm suggesting we have category Ukrainian, category Russian. So, as, you know, I don't want to be, I don't know the word, but I don't want to, and they don't get along, in case you didn't notice the news. So, I think we should recognize both, we have a population of both. And I really, we have a lot of Iranians, but I mean, it's like, but they have their own newspapers, too. And so, if we have it in that language, our press release could be translated to go to those outlets as well. And there are some nonprofits that are run by Ukrainians and Russians in our city. And so, I know that, that if we did a little more outreach, we'd get a little more participation, is what I'm thinking. And plus, we do have on our agenda at some point in the future to have a sister city from Ukraine. So, that would be tuned in nicely with our relationship with that community.
Yes, thank you for that.
Those are my comments. Thank you.
I would think that the, the publishing in the newspapers, is that satisfying some level of a legal requirement? So, we have to put it somewhere.
We'll put it in the messenger, but add two.
Yeah, good.
It is, and HUD traditionally, HUD's not a, an innovative agency. And so, they have traditionally focused on the publication in the newspapers. But there are other, built-in the Citizen Participation Plans, other ways to notice, such the city website, flyers at libraries. So, it, it is a broader notification than just the messenger. I just want to clarify. What we did was just, and we can certainly, and I do think we have language about papers, alternative papers than the messenger, particularly those that are culturally specific to certain populations. So, that's, those are always options. We just wanted to avoid having to only, or to prioritize publishing in the B because it is expensive and it doesn't reach as many people.
Nobody gets to be anymore.
You have our full support there. Any other comments or questions on this side? Nope, anything? Okay, any motions?
We do a motion?
We do.
I move that adopt resolution 2024, a resolution to City Council of the City of Citrus Heights approving the amended Citizen Participation Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa. Any comments or questions to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number 12. The subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4, levy of fiscal year 2425 assessments. The recommendation is to convene the public hearing and to adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year 2425 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Regina Cave, General Services Director. This item before you this evening regarding 9701 is the second step in proceeding with approval for levying the assessments for fiscal year 2425. This map before you identifies the four zones that are within Assessment District 9701. 9701 was formed before the city was incorporated, and we inherited it from Sacramento County. And I know that there has been some questions regarding specifically Zone 4 in terms of who and what residents are a part of Zone 4. So, to break it out into the map, the area in, in yellow is the Creek Ridge Town Home Owners Association. They are not part of the Assessment District. They are not assessed. They do not pay into the Assessment District. There is a small strip that separates between the homeowners association, if you can see my arrow, a small landscape area that, back in 2008, the city entertained and executed an agreement with the Town Home Owners Association to shift a fence line along that landscape. And the city still owns it, but the homeowners association maintains it through their HOA. The area in red, the large parcels, there's 103 between both chunks of red and are part of the Landscape Assessment District. They are all assessed. The area in pink is also part of the 111 parcels that are listed in the Engineers Report for the Landscape Assessment District for Zone 4, but they are also part of the HOA. So, they pay into their HOA, and they're also part of the Assessment District. That was a second phase of the original Creek, Villa Creek Ridge subdivision. So, I just wanted to clarify that to the best I could. So, this item before you, again, is the second step, requesting to convene a public hearing and seeking approval to confirm the diagram and levies for 2425.
Okay, this is a public hearing matter. Before I open the public hearing, any comments or questions for staff? Nice. Okay, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. I have no speaker cards. Anybody signed up to speak? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any comments or questions for staff now?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Regina. So, I have a relationship with one of the residents of Creek Ridge Homewards Association. I probably spent a lot of, well, I definitely spent a lot of time on this particular issue because they felt like they were being, you know, sort of lumped in with some other folks. So, Regina has, was absolutely phenomenal in clarifying this and making sure that, and thank you, just, you just did that, that the Creekside, Creek Ridge Homewards Association is not part of this, this deficit that we're looking at here. So, and, and so with that, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion then.
I move we adopt resolution 2024, a resolution to City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California to confirm the diagram and assessment and levy fiscal 2425 for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 97-01, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any comments or questions regarding the motion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing number 13. The subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts 9801, 9802, and 0301, levy of fiscal year 2425 assessments. And are, there are three resolutions for each of the zones that are presented for City Council consideration.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Regina Cave. This is, again, the second step for these respective Landscape Assessment Districts, 9801, 9802, and 0301. 9801 has one zone, which is right across the street from us in the Aspen Ranch neighborhood. Then we have the four zones that are part of the 9802, which are all subdivisions. And then we have 0301, which consists of Stock Ranch, the north, which is the primarily commercial areas. We have 0301 Zone 2, which is the residential areas, right here off of Stock Ranch. And then we have the newer district, or newer zones, excuse me, which is Zone 3, the Mitchell Village. And same thing, requesting to, again, convene public hearing and then the respective resolutions to approve to levy these zones.
Okay, this is a public hearing item. Before I open the public hearing, any comments or questions of staff? Yes, Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa?
So, so just about all but two of this group are running in deficits as well, is that the way I'm reading your charts?
Not running deficits. They all have surpluses that, over the years, we had built up. But then now we're starting to dip into for some of the operational costs.
But the net is a negative.
Correct. That is because we just started to implement a 3% or up to 4% CPI within the last two fiscal years.
So, you'll catch up on those?
That is the expectation.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody signed up for the item? Nope, gonna close the public hearing. And any motions by the council? Can we take all these three, all these in one motion?
And traditionally, we've taken each into resolution separately, and we have three-
Ashley, about traditions. Okay, we'll take them individually.
I'll do it.
Okay, do it.
Adopt a resolution 2024, a resolution of City Council's, no, wait a second. I want to make sure I'm, yes, that's the right one, okay. City Council of Citrus Heights, California, confirm the diagram and assessment and levy fiscal year 2425 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 98-01, Stock Village Unit, units number 1 and 2.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any comments or questions to the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Aye.
Okay, this next one here, adopt a resolution, a resolution of the City Council of Citrus Heights, California to confirm the diagram and assessment to levy fiscal year 2425 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 98-02, Zone 1, Sorensen Ranch, Zone 2, Autumnwood, Zone 3, Mariposa Creek, and Zone 4, Wyatt Ranch.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer and seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any comments or questions to the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Aye. Next item, please. Next motion, please.
Yes, adopt a resolution 2020, 24, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California to confirm the diagram and assessment and levy fiscal year 2425 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 03-01, Stock Ranch Zones, Zone 1, Stock Ranch North, Zone 2, Stock Ranch South, and Zone 3, Mitchell Farms.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taft. Any questions or comments to the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Yes.
And Mayor Daniels?
Aye. Next item, please.
The next item is public hearing, item number 14. The subject is Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District, levy of fiscal year 2425 annual assessments. The recommendation is to convene a public hearing and to adopt a resolution confirming the diagram and assessments.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Leslie Blumquist, City Engineer. Very similar to the previous two items, each year, the city is required to update the assessments to the lighting district. At the last meeting, you took the first steps and adopted a resolution calling for the public hearing tonight. The lighting district includes all parcels in the city and funds the operation and maintenance of our 4,820 street and safety lights located in the city. No changes are recommended to the assessment rates this year in conjunction with the annual update. There are two items for consideration tonight. The first is to convene the public hearing and hear any public comment. And once closed, the second item for your consideration is to adopt the resolution confirming the diagram and assessment and to levy the fiscal year 2425 assessments for the lighting district.
So, I have a question. You said there's no proposed increase to the assessment?
Correct.
And why aren't we doing that, you know, with, obviously, with the cost of everything going up over the last year, two years? How come we're not keeping up with that so that we don't have to make a big increase at some point?
So, the Citrus Heights Lighting District is some, another assessment district that we inherited from the county, and it was established before the adoption of Prop 218. It doesn't have any CPI provisions included in it. So, unless the Prop 218 prohibits rate increases without a vote of those that are in the assessment districts, in order to increase it, we would have to go out to a vote. And it is something that we can look into for future years, but wasn't completed or conducted for this fiscal year.
And do you know how long it's been since it's been increased?
It has not been increased since the city has incorporated or we have taken this over. I don't think it has been increased since it was, the Prop 218 was approved.
Okay, all right. Any comments or questions before I open the public hearing? Nope, this is a-
Yes, I have a question. Do you know how many parcels, because, you know, the Engineers Report, it says is on file. Do you know how many parcels, I'm on a parcel that pays the $2. Here's one, here's two. And then I have $0.56, less, less than a cup of coffee. That's what I pay for my lights. That's outrageous. It was the same amount I paid in 1991 when I bought the house. And it's time. I don't mind giving you $5, $10. You know, it's like, this is outrageous that we're, so how many of us are in my boat? $2.56 is all I pay for a whole year.
You know, I don't have those numbers of the percent of parcels that pay the increase for the $17.88 versus just the $2.56.
At least they have lights, but, but the point is that we don't have streetlights on our street, but we get lights as we drive down Sunrise and Greenback and off the freeway and all that, and that's nice. I would pay more than $2.56. And I, I think the average person, if they knew that we're taking it out of our general fund to cover those costs, because the cost of maintaining those lights, even though the city has done a wonderful job putting in LEDs and lowering the cost of maintenance, it's still, I mean, I think the public would understand if you said, you know, we just, everything went up, everything went up 6% to 8% on everything. So, little, little bit of lights, you know, and in fact, once we got that pot squared away, then maybe we could add some lighting in the places that don't have lights, but, that want lights. But still, it's like, that's outrageously small. And I'm almost, you know, feel bad that I only paid $2.56. So, I wish there was a little box that I could put another buck in, you know, every now and then, so.
Can't you just mail a check? Can't we take a check? Can we take a check?
I'll leave it at the, at the front desk. So, what I'm saying is that I think, you know, part of our, our strategic goal of fiscal responsibility and fiscal, you know, health, I'd rather see roads paved than, than lights. And so, we're not asking for, it's revenue neutral, because you're only gonna ask for whatever it is that it costs to provide the service. So, it's not like it's a revenue gatherer, but it's just a revenue saver, because if we're spending, you know, $100,000 on lights that ought to be paid for by the people that use the lights, that have the lights, then, I don't know, we ought to look into it, is what I'm saying.
I think the Vice Mayor makes a very good point. It's not been something we haven't chatted about before. And it is ludicrous that some people pay one fee and some people have to pay a much larger fee. And it's probably time for us to try to change that. Okay, any other comments or questions before I open the public hearing? Hearing none. This is a public hearing. Any comments? No, nobody's running up, huh? All right. Close the public hearing. Any comments or questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll do it. Adopt a resolution 2024, a resolution to City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California to confirm the diagram and assessment and levy a fiscal year 2425 assessment for the Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taft. Any comments or questions to the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Yes.
And Mayor Daniels?
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number 15. The subject is Resolution Confirming Report of Delinquent Solid Waste Charges and Ordering Collection of Delinquencies on the Property Tax Rule. The recommendation is to conduct, conduct the public hearing and to adopt a resolution confirming a report of delinquent solid waste charges and ordering collection of delinquencies on the property tax rule.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels, members of the City Council, Mary Poole with the General Services-
Services Department here before you tonight. We also have Carla Hedren, who is the Finance Manager of Republic Services in the audience. We are here tonight to bring the item of the resolution of delinquent residential charges to be placed on the tax roll. This is an action that the city takes on an annual basis to assist Republic Services in collecting past due charges associated with the Residential Garbage and Recycling Services Agreement. Tonight, staff is recommending that the council hold a public hearing and then adopt the resolution to place the delinquent charges on the tax roll. And I have a few slides to briefly summarize the process. So the city derives its authority to take this action from Government Code 387901 and also through the Citrus Heights Municipal Code. And this provides the authority to the, to the city to record the delinquent solid waste charges, penalties, and interest on the tax roll, and also provides for the public hearing to be held. As of July 9th, 2024, there were 1,035 delinquent accounts in the amount due of just over $600,000, with around $60,000 in penalties, bringing the total that is outstanding to about $670,000. The process that we follow to get to this point is in June, similar to the other assessment district public hearings that were just heard. The City Council set a public hearing for tonight, July 10th. And on June 14th, Republic Services then mailed out public hearing notices to all its account holders. The city also is required to mail public hearing notices to the affected property owners that are listed in the assessors district. So that was done on June 21st. We then also published the public hearing notice in the Citrus Heights Messenger on June 28th. The public hearing is being held tonight. In August, there will be a final reconciliation with Republic Services, so any of the stragglers that are coming in, just making sure that the, the record of delinquencies is up to date. Then in August, we will finalize that list and submit it to the county to be placed on the tax roll. Then when the county receives the tax, taxes coming in, they forward the payments to the city, and we then turn around and provide Republic Services with those amounts that are due. So the recommendation tonight is here before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Well, this is my favorite item every year because it's our opportunity to see Mary Poole. Any comments or questions before I open the public hearing?
I think it's amazing that people don't pay their garbage bill.
I'll, I'll hold my, till after the public hearing.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just a clarification, are these all residential accounts or business and residential?
They are all residential accounts. They are part of the 26,000, approximately 26,000 residential accounts that are in this, the Republic Services franchise. And the, this total is about four, a little over 4% of the total accounts.
Okay, wow.
Any others? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Any speaker? She's none, really? Going to close the public hearing? Okay, any comments or questions?
I was going to say, Mary, it's the same in the sewer. The sewer, the delinquent accounts in sewer was about 4% of the accounts, but it came to about, 4% of the sewer district was $10 million, so it's, it's a lot of money.
Okay. Any motions?
I gotta, I gotta.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And that is, you know, last year was about 1,000. It seems like it's like, just, it's, it's almost the math is, just repeats every year.
It's very similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, last, it was, and it goes down, so it goes down, it went down about 384 accounts since we did the notice in, in late June.
Does Republic offer assistance to low-income families for that bill?
Republic does not offer assistance to low-income families. That would be something the city would have to do, because it can't be included as part of the, the rate pairs can't subsidize that.
Okay, yeah, like in sewer, they do the non-rate, non-fee, is what they subsidize for the assistance program.
Is there any correlation for, for rental properties versus homeowner, home-owned properties? Are these people that potentially vacated their property and just left the bill?
I have not looked into that, but I certainly could.
It seems, because it's so consistent, there's got to be a systematic sort of connection here. I'm just, that's just sort of one of the things that comes to mind for me is, somebody just moved out and bailed out on their bill and.
Tenants.
Yeah, it was a tenant issue.
The, the average, a number of accounts, very similar to what you said, Councilmember Schaefer, is around 1,100, since we've been doing this.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll let somebody else take it.
Get those gals down there and just.
All right, I'll move that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of Citrus Heights, confirming a report of delinquent solid waste charges and ordering collection of delinquencies on the property tax roll.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Middleton and seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taff. Any questions on the, comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. Next item, please. Oh, yeah, yeah, next item.
Next item is Department, Department Reports, number 16. The subject is update on partnership with neighborhood areas to identify locations for placemaking assets promoting historic Lincoln Highway or similar areas of interest by the General Services Department.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, Regina Caves. I'm proud to bring this item before you. This has been a fun one for me. I've been working with one of our local residents here, Mr. Andrew Saunders, my pleasure, and the Lincoln Highway Association, California Chapter, to help identify locations here in the city and also create specifications for these signs so we can use these here in the future, if the council so, so wishes. Mr. Andrew Saunders has identified for me four locations on Auburn Boulevard, of course. We have a location identified adjacent to Sylvan Cemetery. There's currently a historic sign there, right next to the cemetery, so that would work very well. Additionally, we have the 14 Mile House near Donegal Drive, that is also a point of interest of historical interest. We have the 12 Mile House, which is near Devicki, down south of Greenback Lane. And then based on council input at a prior meeting, we've also looked at the north city limits, possibly in conjunction with a new signalized intersection that will be erected as part of Auburn Boulevard Phase Two. That would, that sign would go in at completion of the project, but we would plan for that ahead of time and seeing if we can actually incorporate it into the monument. So fabrication currently is in process, and we will be coordinating for installation and unveiling, so we will have some type of press releases, definitely some photographs to commemorate each one of the locations. Mr. Andrew Saunders, I don't know if you had had any comments that you had wanted to make?
You've been wonderful to work with.
That's not what I was asking for, but thank you.
How much you pay him to say that?
I did not. Thank you. And that would be it.
Any comments or questions?
It's a nice design. It's a nice design. Red, white, and blue, it's a nice design.
I was just sad that they're on Folsom, along the, the main corridor there, and then Regina interacted with the city of Folsom for some of their.
I think that would hopefully look great on the, at the new monument that's going to happen. Absolutely. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is City Manager Items.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Ash Feeney, your City Manager. I do have a number of updates here for you tonight. One of them is, I did a, do a quarterly City Manager message, and I just released a message today on some of our homelessness prevention response and some of the tools we use on that. So that's out today. Prior messages, I had one in March 2024 on infrastructure and one in December of 2023 on community image. So every quarter, release a message that's in inbox for those that are signed up for that message. It's also posted on our webpage as well. On this message, it does talk about the recent grants passed Supreme Court ruling that's been in the news, so wanting to make sure that our residents understand what that means for Citrus Heights, speaks to enforcement and policy initiatives, also collaboration for services and resources for homeless prevention and to help those that are experiencing homelessness. And then also, how can you, how can you help? We have our CARES campaign about report, maintain, chip in, so there's certainly some chip in opportunities for residents and businesses that, that want to get involved. It's been shared, as I mentioned, email, website, as well as on social media. We'll have a post coming out on that tomorrow. City Scoop, unfortunately, I think all the ice cream would have been melted if we proceeded with City Scoop. We've had some fantastic City Scoop events. It's something that's near and dear, I know, to the City Council and our staff's heart, and it's been well received by the community. We so appreciate Metro Fire's collaboration. Hold a City Scoop at Station 27, but unfortunately, with the heat we're experiencing, we had to cancel it. I don't want to put anyone in harm's way, and again, it might be disappointing with the ice cream if it's, if it's liquid. So the next City Scoop is on August 8th, and we're going to hope for some cooperating weather, and that one will be held at Lykan School, and that'll start at 6:30 PM. Of course, with Metro Fire, great partner, we'll continue to coordinate with them on some future event. Cooling Centers, speaking of the heat, our cooling center has been open, continues to be open, our Police Department Lobby at 6315 Fountain Square Drive. The cooling center is always open any day that we are projecting 100 degrees or hotter, and it is open until 8:00 PM or until the temperature drops below 100 degrees, but it won't close earlier than 8:00 PM. In addition to our local cooling center, there's a number of regional cooling centers. In Sacramento, Regional Transit does offer free rides to cooling centers throughout the region. There's no flyer needed. I know that that's been talked about in the past. If they just mention, I'd like to get to a cooling center, you know, any of our residents can get to another cooling center location throughout the region.
Where can pets go? If, if we don't take them, where can they go? Do we know?
I don't, I, you know, that's something that people would have to make an arrangement for their pet. If they have a pet, they would need to make an arrangement for where that pet could go. Stars and Stripes, we had a fantastic celebration. The council touched on this. It was on June 29th. It was our second annual event, and it was, it was fantastic. Council touched on it. I mean, we had more than 7,000 attendees, and it went, it went terrific. I mean, I saw so many people connecting with neighbors. It was truly a community event. I talked to a lot of people afterward that, I mean, there were schoolchildren, seeing kids from school, running around, having a good time, listening to music, fantastic kids zone, a lot of community partners that participated, and some great music, too, and followed with a fantastic fireworks show. No, no issues. Fantastic community event. People really enjoyed it, a lot of good feedback, and just, we have some photos that can be found on the website here, but appreciate all the supportive comments on that, and really appreciate the team's effort. That was a huge effort. It continues to be. Really impressed with the team on executing an event like this for the community. Really went very well. Lot of effort there. We have a City Council meeting recess that's going to be occurring for summer recess. It'll, the July 24th meeting will not be held. The next meeting will be on Wednesday, August 14th. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Anything for the City Manager? Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by Councilmembers or future agenda items.
Anything? Anything?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to get some support. I'd like to do a formal presentation for my trip to Denver. I think there, the, it's, it was a really productive trip, and I'd like to share some of the, some of the information I gathered while I was there, and then some, some of the comparisons I did with our own community with, versus the, the mall, it was the Belmar Mall in Lakewood, very similar, so I'd like to, to do a formal presentation with the council on that.
Okay, I'll second that.
Yeah.
A third, fourth, fifth.
Anything else, Councilmember Schaefer?
That's it.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa?
In light of tonight's public comments, and my comments myself, is that I think we should become a no-tolerant for illegal fireworks in our city. The city of Woodland made over $100,000. They have an ordinance that not only fines per host, but per firework. So like, one guy had 22, so he was fined $22,000. If nothing else, an ordinance could be steep enough that it would be the fear of the Lord of getting caught, you know, that that might deter, I mean, maybe your neighborhood was good, Mary Jane, mine was not. It was just horrible. So just look at our ordinance, make it stiffer, you know, and then we can work at participation to the community, to reporting, but right now, our ordinance is, I don't think, very enforceable. People only look at it, won't take deal.
I support that.
Okay, we'll bring that back.
Do it.
Anything else?
I just, Mr. Mayor, one comment I will make, and our acting city attorney, Dean Pucci, was kind enough to look up the cooling centers and verified that there are some cooling centers that do accept pets, in that we have links on.
We have links on our site? Yeah, we sure do. Okay. Good, thanks. Thanks for looking that up.
Okay, we are going to adjourn in a moment. However, we're going to adjourn and then go right into a one-item special meeting right here. So it's kind of unusual, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what's going on. So if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn. And then I'll go ahead and call the special meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council for July 10th, 2024 meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taff?
Here.
Councilmember Middleton?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Present.
And Mayor Daniels?
Here. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment.
I have no sign-up sheets, any public comment?
I do not have any.
Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar. The subject is purchase agreement for 7555 and 7569 Old Auburn Road. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement and joint escrow instructions with Stony Investments for the acquisition of 7555 and 7569 Old Auburn Road.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and Ash Feeney, your City Manager, to talk about this particular item. As City Clerk Van mentioned, it is a request to approve a resolution that would authorize your City Manager to enter into a purchase and agreement to acquire these properties, and I'm going to speak to that here momentarily. If we look at the site, it is at 755 and 7569 Old Auburn Road. It is a former preschool that has recently closed, and it is a unique site. It does have two existing buildings. One of them is 3,128 square feet, the other is 4,000 square feet. I have toured the buildings, and it's on a, it's two separate parcels, and they total about 1.74 acres in size. Public facilities are permitted use in this zone, and there's existing fencing and other improvements, as well as landscape and some other ancillary structures on the site. It's a unique opportunity for strategic investment for the city of Citrus Heights. It's not often that we see structures that could support future services that come available on the market that are not too far from our City Hall campus here in the city. And I know one of the strategic objectives that the council currently has on their calendar that we are going to be researching, and it was one of your charges to us, was to look at the feasibility of increased local sheltering and reunification options for lost pets. So I, I, I and the team have been looking at some of those options, and some of those options are very limited. And so this acquisition does provide a strategic opportunity for some point in the future, and that may be out aways, candidly, because that's something that we need to explore as a staff team. We do have a, a future meeting coming to you, a contract with Sacramento County for sheltering options, and, and we're excited to have that relationship with them. But the cost of sheltering is increasing. We're seeing over 100% increase in this contract in the fiscal year. So as your city manager, I want to look for opportunities that hit on the strategic objective that you're looking at, but also that help us control our destiny in the future, whether that future is in the coming years, five years, 10 years out, and opportunity like this would provide for a strategic investment, should we ultimately look to expand some local sheltering options if the costs warrant us doing so. And then certainly, the property as it exists provides for a number of different opportunities if that sheltering option needs to wait a bit. But we'll come back and talk more about those sheltering options in the future, but it is a unique strategic investment opportunity, and it's one I'd recommend the city council authorize me to pursue. I'm going to go over some deal terms. For the purchase agreement terms, the acquisition price would be 1.2 million dollars. There are deposits, $25,000 initial deposit that would be refundable for up to a period of 60 days that would give us a feasibility period to investigate the property. After that, the, the deposit is increased to $50,000, so we'd have a $50,000 total deposit. It would be applicable to the purchase price. At that time, it would be non-refundable, but we'd have an additional 60 days, you know, to continue to examine the property. In addition to that, $50,000 deposit going non-refundable after that 60-day period, there would be a non-applicable per diem payment to the seller, and that would be $5,000